Good evening. This meeting of February 26, 2018 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Okay.
Turn it over to you. No, you might as well start, yeah.
So two-fold meeting tonight, as you know. One is our second edition of what's going on with our priority initiatives. So those who are maybe watching on TV, we set priority initiatives every year. We review those with the board of the community in October, in February, and then again at the end of May. So this is the last time we will write those priority initiatives based on the current strategic plan. The next round of priority initiatives will be based on a new strategic plan, which is the second half of the meeting, where we will talk about our outcomes from that plan. So we're getting culture to finalizing that plan, and tonight will be an important step in that conversation. So first off, and I'll go as quickly as you feel is prudent, but if I'm moving through these and you want to ask a question, please get my attention. I'd be happy to slow down. And if I don't know the answer, the fine folks at the table there certainly do. So we'll call them to the microphone, and they all know that if they're speaking, they have to come up and be on the microphone so that folks, the televised portion, can hear what they're having to say. So again, you know, our icon, the check mark means it's been completed. Green means we've made significant progress this year. Yellow means we've made steady progress, and then red means that either some or no progress. In fact, that's maybe a target, a priority initiative that we're second guessing or deciding maybe that's not the right way to go, or it's a resource issue, something like that. So let's jump in. You know our strategic plan, you know our goals, what we're attempting to do. So our current strategic plan, what you have in our first column, is student achievement. And so the first one is plan for update standards, assessment content, instruction, and resources in secondary business education, elementary math gifted and talented through in-depth studies. So we have got ongoing studies. Math study, in fact, was meeting earlier this afternoon. It may still be there, next door at Keystone. So that team is developing a rubric to assist in determining the materials that will meet our priorities. The plan is to have that piloted next year amongst our content leaders. Those materials will be chosen on the 18th, I'm sorry, in May, I guess, I thought I had a specific date. Likewise, work going on in secondary business education, which received a boost earlier this year with the inclusion for a graduation requirement of personal financial literacy. So that's moving along quite well as well. Launch and Anytime Anywhere Initiative, that was and remains a check mark. So freshmen have laptops, it's working very well. Next year, our intent would be to replicate that. So next year at our high schools, freshmen and sophomores will have laptops, and then the following year, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and then the following year, all high school students will be in a one-to-one situation, as well as staff having professional development around how to utilize that impactfully in a classroom. The third one, provide teachers with more diagnostic information to guide their instruction of students through implementation of the Iowa tier system in pre-K through sixth reading. So that has moved from green, I believe it was last time, to a check mark. In February, fast reading, formerly, okay, elementary principals, instructional coaches, and educational support team analyze data and discussing protocol for determining interventions. Educational support team and middle school instructional coaches have received protocol for determining those interventions. So it's all about getting on the same page of how we're going to serve students who are different levels of the tier. All coaches and principals have operationalized progress monitoring of the Fast Bridge system. So FAST, we call it FAST. Cindy FAST stands for? Okay, well anyways, the Fast Bridge System, we just call it FAST because that's the name of the state program. I thought maybe you know what FAST was. Instructional coaches, along with district staff, have created a bank of reading intervention. So this is all about reading and how do we know where our students are reading and at what level? And we will talk about that when we get back to our strategic plan, the second half of the meeting, some of the information that, how we're going to use that to track progress. Actively engage students in their own learning through implementation of new or enhanced experience-based instructional strategies such as project-based learning. That remains yellow. It's been a top priority. It's, we're trying to find a way to, we've got some really great success stories about this program or that program. You'll hear, if you haven't already, about the Tiny House, those types of projects at the ALC. But what you'll see in the next goal areas or outcomes for the next round of strategic planning, some more specific targeted areas so we could move this away from yellow and into, again, I hate to say it's moved because we're looking in the context of all students, and we're not at the point where all students have that embedded into their curriculum. But we're making plans to do that, we're getting there. It's just, that is a multi-year plan, like we talked about previously. Again, if I'm going too fast, certainly let me know if you've got a question. Student maximize learning for students at all levels by enhancing and strengthening general education, special education co-teaching. So as you know, we spent a significant dollar amount to get our teachers in some of our elementary schools. We had some more teachers this winter also receive training in co-teaching. We really see this as a path forward for a lot of our students to have multiple certified adults in that classroom and the mix of abilities in that classroom. So this has been a significant step for us. It's green. We're hoping to make that a check mark before our end of the year, but it is really something that is starting to bear fruit in some of our elementary schools. If you have a chance to visit, and as I know some of you do, really making a difference for our kids. Student Development.
Could I just ask a question, Stan, about the first item in student achievement? You spoke of the elementary math and the secondary business education studies and enhancements that are going on. Maybe I missed it. Was there anything about the gifted and talented?
Gifted and talented, I mentioned in our last update. I don't believe anything has changed between then and now, but we'll see that before our last update.
Okay.
So I just, I'm looking at, unless, David, if there's something you want to add to that?
That study is underway, Nancy. Even tonight at Keystone, from six to eight, it's a parents group coming in. The way we're doing that study is with a core group of teachers and school people, but at various points bringing in other people to get their input. There aren't parents on the long-haul study committee, but they're brought in at times and for two hours, they're over at Keystone tonight. So yeah, we're making progress. We're using some of the study materials that we had in the past that you would be familiar with. It's that red book, I forgot the title of it, about the difference between giftedness and talented. We're assessing all of that right now. So no planning or recommendations have come forth.
So is that secondary only, or is that also involving elementary?
Well, it's been secondary, but we've been involving the elementary because we keep seeing how they're getting tied together. So in fact, there originally was one elementary teacher representative on there, but Bridget's been part of it, and we're kind of linking that all together now. We're finding out that that makes probably more sense.
Thank you.
So again, in a couple of months, when we come back with the final, we'll have, it's more of a timing issue, me and with meetings tonight and that sort of thing. Student Development. Explore and plan for updated instructional delivery model for students with behavior We have, am I still on? Okay, it sounded like a cutout. We have looked at alternatives within the district for our students and that delivery model, and I guess it's not a secret to talk about the fact that really we're talking about Hillcrest and Four Oaks as part of that. And so we have moved forward with a plan to construct a new facility adjacent to, tied into the Alternative Learning Center. That planning is moving along very well. There are a few parking variants, types of things, working with the city. Last week, we met with, had an open meeting to neighbors, or with neighbors, inviting them to give comment on the plan, and based on one particularly old part of the building back in that old boiler room that will come down eventually, they were very excited about that. So we didn't have any concerns raised from the, from the community folks there, concerned about the alleyway, making sure that becomes, stays intact, which it will. We are also looking at then, once the facility, that's just step one, but what does that programming look like? We've been meeting regularly with the staff at Hillcrest, a little less regularly, but occasionally with the folks at Four Oaks, as well as doing some visits. Shirley's been sort of in charge of those site visits to see how other facilities are dealing with the students that have that level of need. So very comfortable that is green and moving towards check. Again, we've got some, a few variances we're looking for with parking. It seems to be the biggest issue because it is technically a high school, and while most of those students won't drive there, there's, I don't know if I'm doing that when I move. Sorry. Research and explore the addition of a transitional kindergarten program. We're in the process of determining implementation fidelity of creative curriculum in the district. In other words, what has happened to identify, is this a need in the processes of determining the MTSS process? Also Cindy's having some conversations with the Department of Ed about transitional kindergarten. There are some rules and regulations around transitional kindergarten. Maybe I should back up for a second. Transitional kindergarten is for a student coming out of, who's a four-year-old coming as a five-year-old to kindergarten. So maybe they came out of a preschool, maybe they didn't, and they would come to a transitional kindergarten first, and then potentially stay for a second year of kindergarten, which we, there are some things you've got to retain and that sort of thing. And there are some rules around that at the state level. Some districts have these. We're not sure they're following all the rules, but again, but our intent would be to make sure that we're doing something that is good for kids. Also, obviously conversations with other UENS who have that. So a green, conversation continues. It is, we want to make sure that we have everything aligned first in the preschools and in our kindergartens to say, okay, there's a need for, and it's a relatively small number. Districts that have it, we're not talking large numbers of kids. You're usually talking one or two sections with 12 or 15 kids in a section. So district-wide, you may be talking, you know, somewhere between 20 and 30 students. Increase the number of students taking post-secondary coursework with specific emphasis on removing barriers for underrepresented groups. That is a major effort in our district this year with a book study that we did with administrators the first semester, and now some surveying and some work with the data second semester, as well as an equity committee that met a week ago, I think it was a week ago, to talk about how do we make sure that all students have the opportunity to maximize their educational experience while they're in the district. We are very comfortable, we don't have intentional barriers there, but if there are some pieces there that we can remove that help students feel more invited so that we make sure all of our students, and you'll see when we get to our outcomes for the next strategic plan, some more information about this. But feeling very good about where we're at and where we're moving to, along that path. Again, green, we really try not to move to a check mark until something is done, and you know, this is where we're at. Support enhance comprehensive cultural competency at all secondary schools, or secondary schools, I don't know if those checked last time, and don't move to a check this time. So our secondary schools are working on, or have done, training in that area. Develop a long-term sustainable after-schools activity program at the middle school level. You know, that's always our LEAP program because we've got activities as far as athletics and drama and music, but it's for kids who don't really fit that mold or don't feel attracted to that. And that's an ongoing piece because we're not really funded as a district to have that programming, so we're often looking for partners. We've got great partners in that. We did recently submit the 21st Century Grant, which is how LEAP started in the first place. So if we would be fortunate to receive the 21st Century Grant, that would alleviate some of the stress over that for Shirley. Is that a five-year grant?
Yes.
So for five years, so we're hopeful. We have submitted it in the past, and we're successful once, haven't been successful recently in large part because they change the focus of those grants from time to time, and there's a little bit of hoop jumping that goes on. But we are hopeful, and if that's not, then we will continue to pursue other message because LEAP is making a difference for kids at the middle school age to have something to do after school.
When do you expect to hear?
Shirley, do you know timeline? Could you move up on the, I'm sorry, you won't be on the recording if you're not on the microphone.
The timeline is by the end of March. Typically, we hear by mid-March if it's positive, end of March if it's not. So within the next month, we should know.
And we will see an email followed by press release if we get it, because that'll be something we would be very excited about having. If not, we will continue to find other ways to source that. Community Engagement. Pilot and make modifications to an elementary standards-based progress report to more effectively communicate student learning to students and families. Again, we've had another round of parent-teacher conferences, somewhat snow delayed, but I think we've got all of them in now. And so we are piloting with our content leaders what this report card would look like. Parents have had some suggestions and some ideas. We've made some tweaks based on that, by and large are very satisfied, very happy with it because it does help them know very specifically, not just what their, you know, can their student read, or you know, are they an E, an M, or an S, but what are those skill sets and what have they accomplished? And where are some other areas that a parent, that a teacher's going to continue to work on them with, but also as a parent? Here's, you know, maybe it's capitalization, maybe it's punctuation, maybe it's very specific, what is that skill deficit if there is one, or not, because they've got those things checked marked. So it just really communicates much more clearly. And that's been a huge, Nancy really got the ball rolling on that last year, and Cindy and folks have taken that on. Very excited about where that's going to take us, and our parents by and large have liked that. Effectively, sorry, effectively communicate to the community the impact of the instructional support lab in district operations, that's been a check mark that passed last fall. Conducted district-wide equity audit, that was tied back to what I made earlier comments as far as access to all students towards our programming. And so green, we are moving forward with that, and more to come as we get to our next report out. Engage community partners to explore potential new delivery models to expand the reach of summer reading support for elementary schools. I'm very excited about this. We have had many meetings that we haven't had in the past with sort of centers of influence. So we know that there's a discrepancy, that if a student, and I'm going to make these numbers up a little bit, I'll be pretty close, but if we invite 30 students from Carver, we'll probably have 25 of those students come to summer reading program. If we invite 30 students from Lincoln, we'll probably have five. And so we have tried all method of communication from the district. So now our tactic is to meet with people who have influence in that area. So we've met with Robert Kimball, we've met with Reverend Sampson from the Marshalese community, and we've shared, you know, here's the data, and over the years, these are how many students are coming and more qualified, and how can you help us spread the message? And so we're really trying to go from a different communication standpoint with those who sort of have some influence in those communities. But we're also looking at then, if there are students are other places, how can we support in those places? Instead of everybody coming to us, can we support with some resources where they are? Whether that's with the St. Marks, whether that's with the city, whether that's with the Dream Center, variety of different places. So very excited about that, hoping that we have an impact because we know that the kids who come receive significant support to reading during that summer program. Launch an e-backpack solution to more effectively share community offerings to families and students. As you probably know, we send out lots of flyers every week or so with students, explaining a variety of things available to students, and that's fine. But we would like to be able to do that in an electronic e-backpack, or an app, or a site somewhere that a student, a parent could go and search that. It saves us a lot of work in distribution, but obviously we want to do it in a way that those who don't have technology available, we might still help them have access. So it's just moving towards a paperless society, one small step at a time. Effective resource management. Finalize design and begin construction of a new swimming pool. So everything is green, it will be a check when they start, when, we, next big step, I guess, is bids. So when we receive the bids, if it's within our budget, obviously that's one thing. If it exceeds our budget, that's something else, and that's something we'll have to talk about. So the first part lies that the finalized design has happened. We're very hopeful, begin construction will follow shortly. Kevin, bid opening is?
Bid opening will be in February, and then it'll go to the board, I believe, in April for final.
In March.
March, yeah.
Okay. So by our April board meeting, we'll know whether or not we have a bid that is within our budget. So moving very quickly. Study the possible transition of a district student information system and develop appropriate next steps based on that decision. So Colby and team have been hard at work with that. Let me get to my, I gotta remember to turn the page. So we would say that that is completed. On December 11th, school board approved adopting and implementing Infinite Campus as the district's next student information system, which you are aware of that. On the 23rd, project launch with computer information concepts, representatives to start planning for the transition, so we're in that process of transition. 24th through 25th, district core group met with the computer, this group, CIC representatives, and talked about the district and how we utilize student information and how their system will fit our needs and what tweaks might be done. Phase one, working on, so currently in that phase, working on the first of four data conversions from Power School to Infinite Campus. We've got all of our school camp, all of our student information captured in Power School, we've got to move it to Infinite Campus. The reason we are doing that is because we have a lot greater access to that data, how we can pull that data, look at that data, utilize that data for decision-making. And then develop an overview timeline for the core team and district staff to understand the transition process. How'd it do, Colby?
Did great.
All right. As you can imagine, I've got a page and a half of notes, so I tried to give you the reader's digest. But it is, it is an excellent project that really will be handy, useful for our parents and for our teachers and our students. So we just like to give Colby a hard time about his brevity. Create a plan for electronic storage of district records. This is yellow, this is going a little bit more slowly, not something that I suspect we will have completed by the end of this year. Again, we, like most large entities, have a lot of paper, and how do we put that paper into an electronic storage system in a way that is cost-effective, timely, and then of course retrievable and usable? And it's not so much the moving forward part, it's the 150 years of paper that we have, and how do we put that into a system? So it's taking a little longer than expected, so I would not anticipate that that's going to be a check mark this year.
And secure, keeping it all secure.
And secure, absolutely. Security for that's important, absolutely.
Just curious to how frequently, you know, back up our records every day, as far as...
Come up to the microphone, please, Colby.
To answer your question directly, electronic records are backed up nightly. Paper records are stored, obviously, in a vault. We sometimes archive them to electronic, depends on the nature of that, but that's one of the reasons we're migrating to the system, so we can systematize that and make sure that all of our mediums, and when I say mediums, not only paper, but we have a lot of microfiche, microfilm of documents that need to be ingested into some sort of enterprise content management system as well. So those would also be backed up nightly as well, too, then.
So this would be like student records, grades, et cetera?
Student records, grades, transcripts that are not stored electronically to date. We have a lot of those that are older transcripts that need to be ingested into the system, but then we also have a lot of accounts payable information.
Human resource records.
Human resource records on employees that payroll that are also currently in paper form. Thank you. You're welcome.
Truly, pretty much every piece of paper that we've collected for 100 years, but it has to be maintained.
And we have the only microfiche machine in the whole world. It's the only one.
And people come here specifically to use it. We'll get, can we use your microfiche machine?
The library doesn't even have one anymore.
I don't know.
I used to, I don't believe they have one.
So we would like to transition away from that, but the volume of paper you might imagine the school district has is unbelievable. So moving on to employee excellence. Provide leadership development for administrators through evaluated training programs. That's something we did first semester. We want to make sure that our, the way we utilize evaluations is growth-inducing and helpful to employees, and that it's not simply, so we've done some training there to get all of our employees, and we've done that probably every five or six years as a district. And so this was the next version of that. The state provides a training that we could utilize. We found it to be lacking, and so we asked for permission. I think we were one of two districts in the state that did it on their own in a way that was far more impactful. Provide teacher leaders with leadership development and instructional coaching and mentoring. That's ongoing. Again, that's green. We anticipate that that's going to be a check mark. That's some of the work we're doing through New Teacher Center. David and Cindy have led that endeavor. So again, something we anticipate being a check mark by the end of the year. Standardize and align district employment practices with new requirements of the Iowa law regarding public and public employment. As we've talked about, things changed dramatically last year when the legislature changed some laws in regards to collective bargaining and other pieces of employee life. And so Phil has been working hard on that to make sure that we've got everything that, you know, that it's fair and equitable, but also viewable and transparent to our employees about how we're working on those areas. Phil, I don't know if you have anything?
Yeah, and I would just expect that we have, my goal is that we have this all ready for the beginning of the next school year. And so, because it's a lot of, it's a lot of busy work and realigning of things, and things that kind of lend itself to summertime when we can really get at it and be efficient at getting it. It's just a matter of realigning where things are and what, you know, making it accessible to all of our employees so that they know what the expectations are and what conditions, what roles, responsibilities, and rights they have. So it should be, that's the goal, should be, though.
Okay, and the last one is implement a staff recognition system to highlight exemplary work. You know, I really think the more we work on this one, the more, it will never be a check mark because it'll always be something new, and how do we continue to find ways? So you know, the big one last year that we used at our opening this year was the sort of heartfelt notes from the students and the graduates to staff. We've also done a, am I going to draw on a blank on that?
A-plus.
The A-plus staff member, so it's a link to our, on our website, so a staff, you know, anybody can fill out a note to a staff member or about a staff member that goes to the principal, comes to the, we'll get to the teacher to the forum. Also added a new close-up video featuring, featuring personal outstanding staff in the district. So again, putting their faces out there, recognition, I mean, nothing talks recognition about seeing their, what they're doing. You know, it's one thing to get a certificate, and that's good, but how do we put out there, you know, in the social media world of... you know, in the social media world of today, those, their faces and what's going on? And then, of course, we'll continue with a few other things to continue to refine that. Some of those things, we like to keep a little bit as a surprise, particularly like the graduation thing. Again, we want teachers to be, or other staff, it's not just teachers, it's, you know, we want to recognize our bus drivers who really plow through some really, you know, interesting conditions, weather-wise. Secretaries who do a fantastic job of helping our, people who might call in, get to the right person and do so with a smile on their face. Parent professionals who work hand-in-hand with kids. Food service workers who, you know, again, talk to kids, smile at kids, welcome kids, feed them a nice nutritious meal. Secretaries, I think you mentioned secretaries, I'm going to lose some, I'm billing grounds who, as you know, do a family shop. So we really want to focus this on all employees, not just teachers specifically.
Our activity sponsors, our coaches.
Totally, absolutely, absolutely. Those folks have huge impacts on, on the lives of our students. So that really is about the 35-minute version of where we're at. I think we've got a pretty good process down, one that we'd like to continue with our next strategic plan, so that we set those priority initiatives. So in many ways, we view that as our report card. You know, this is what we've agreed we're going to do this year, and we owe it to you and to the community to report out that we are or are not receiving passing grades in those areas. Any questions? All right, well, we'll transition here. Give us just a second. All right, so, and I didn't bring a strategic plan with me. So everybody is familiar with our current strategic plan, and it is, it was five years old in December. And so we are working in a timeline. So Jody's got a copy, or Nancy, just kind of hold that up. And, you know, you've all seen that, and the community has seen that. But it's time for us to revisit our strategic plan and look at things a little bit differently. They're all laughing because I always have one with me, and here I don't. But how do we, how do we continue to move the district forward in a way that is transparent and accountable and good for, and good for our kids? So you know, at our last meeting, we wrote, well, we took what the board did in a work session and condensed those into our goals. So we condensed five goals into four, a condensing student development, student achievement. So for those four goals moving forward, I'll just read them since we've only, second time we've seen them. Empower all students with the education and skills necessary to live healthy, rewarding lives as confident, successful individuals. Number two, broaden meaningful active engagement among students, parents, and community business partners to enhance diverse learning opportunities for all students. Three, maintain fiscal stability, maximize efficiency of district operations, and align resources to support dynamic teaching and learning. And then fourth, expect staff to meet the needs of the students to effectively and in a caring way, and demonstrate behaviors and attitudes that are consistent with the belief that all students can learn. So those, those are the big, broad goal areas. And the way we developed our strategic plan last time, we looked at those goal areas, and then below that, Nancy, maybe I will have you pass that down if you don't mind. Or Jim. So last time, we did this pretty, pretty linearly. We developed the goals, then we came at you with sort of, these are the things that we're going to do. And then the last thing we do is we decided what those outcomes or measures would be. Okay? So you're going to see a little bit different process this time with this being the last piece. If you remember, five years ago, five, a little over five years ago, this was prior to us having priority initiatives. So there was an attempt made to write everything that would eventually be a priority initiative in this category. Well, after year one, we're looking at year two, getting, we always do a work session with the boards, brainstorming. We kind of tweaked and moved because, again, we were trying to get to these goals. One of the things that I was a little, I grew concerned about eventually was we weren't really measuring things around those goals. I mean, we were, but we weren't very specific about what our target was. So this time in our process, we were talking about our goal areas. Now, tonight, we're going to talk about our outcomes. Okay? What is it that's going to tell us if we are getting, if we're moving the needle, if you will? And then when we're done with that, we'll go back and we'll look at action steps. What are the action steps that we need to create to make an optimal, optimal learning environment? So what are we going to have to do in that purple area to get to the outcomes of the green? And instead of having outcomes amongst every category, we have a list of 12 outcomes that we'll see that, when we do all of these things above, what comes out at the other end? What do our students look like? Okay? So that's just hopefully a reminder of where we've, of where we've, what we've already talked about. So this is a draft, open to, obviously, input. It's sort of our recommendation slash best guess, but certainly open to your interpretation for change, for if there's something missing, something you'd like to see added. This really is a great opportunity for the board to voice that. We will hand a few things out here. So when I said earlier that I didn't know that we had picked targets last time, what I really meant is it wasn't really data-driven. It wasn't as measurable as it might have been. No, it was, it was event-driven, it was specific, it was, I'm not trying to diminish our last strategic plan. We wouldn't be where we are today if we didn't have a good strategic plan five years ago. But we're a little more sophisticated now. I think we're a little more willing to take a risk. And so these draft outcomes aren't tied directly to an individual goal area. They're tied to all of the goal areas working together, and so what is it that we're going to look at? So this is what we proposed. Again, there's not, there are a couple of different possible timelines. One would be that we go through these outcomes tonight, and the board's feeling pretty good about that, and then our next ed programs will fill in the, can you go back, Mike? Will fill in the action steps and talk about that, and then come to the full board, or if the board wants more time, we'll back up and look at that. I mean, we don't have to be in a huge hurry to get this done. We would like to finish it no later than April so that we have April and May to write our priority initiatives for next year. If that has to be May and June, it's May and June, but we'll, we'll get there. So we really want to be specific, and I, and some of these are going to take a little bit of explanation as to why we would choose this. So this is a new area, kindergarten readiness. Increase proficiency on the FAST reading assessment. Now, in the fall of this year, 46%, so in the first, was it two weeks of school? Cindy, when do they take the FAST? First two or three weeks of school, 46% of our kindergarteners were where they should be at the beginning of a, of their educational experience. Okay? So we want to push that goal to 65%. And why did we choose this goal? Somebody might say, but you don't control a lot of the inputs to that. Well, that's exactly why, because it forces us out of our, our K-12 comfort zone to work more specifically with the preschools, but also with parents who might choose to not do preschool. How are we going to communicate with them? How, what are we going to offer them in the way of help so that they can understand what, you know, their youngster is going to need to know when they come in, in kindergarten? So this is a stretch, but we know that the starting point is impactful, our endpoint is impacted by our starting point. So we want to step out on this limb, or recommend that we do, to say, even though that's not within our normal comfort zone, we don't have data prior to this fall, or we would give you a little bit more longitudinal data, but we don't have it. The FAST test is new this year, so we don't know how they scored previous years. But we know that we need to help our community, we need to be a leader in our community to getting kids ready for kindergarten on the, in the early stages.
Is the FAST test done again at the end?
It's, Cindy, you want to come up?
Just to see how those students progress.
You may as well stay up here for the next couple, Cindy, and then we'll let David come up.
So, yeah, it'll be done three times a year. And it's, it's grades K through sixth grade, really, is when we give that test, three times.
But in this goal, we're looking specifically at kindergarten. We really, again, it's a risk because we don't control all the pieces, but we want to, we want to develop priority initiatives that are getting us working more closely with, you know, we, we talk a lot about, well, kids who come ready. Well, what, what can we do to help kids come ready? So some of these percentages might look small. 19%, five years, is that too high, too low? We don't know because we don't have a baseline, but we do know that it's important for that. So we're looking at, can you go back for a second, Mike? So we're looking at beginning, so kindergarten, third grade, eighth grade, 11th grade, graduation, and then we'll talk about some other pieces there. But how are we, what are those pieces along the way that make sure that everything that up here, that we're doing up here matters? Because that's what's important. Okay?
So, just in, in terms of this, Cindy, fall kindergarten readiness, then the things that we would find in terms of the action steps would be relative to preschool?
Correct. So it may be fidelity checks, a creative curriculum. That might be one.
It might also be outreach to parents. We don't send their kids to preschool. We don't always know who they are, so that'll be a...
Right.
Care package when a kid's born at Mercy or Finley, who knows?
Yeah, there'd be a lot, well, five years.
I'm serious about that. Parents don't get a lot of guidance and instruction right out of the chute on what to do with your kids.
So we're not trying to take over anybody's world, but we want to be a great resource and help, help impact the, the raw material that comes across that loading dock on first day of kindergarten.
That's a quantum leap.
It's a little bit scary. But it, you know, we're going to push ourselves.
That's right.
So then we're looking at what are our, what are our indicators in third grade? Increase proficiency on the FAST reading assessment. Again, we don't have baseline, so we'll have to set that baseline when the FAST data begins. Increase reading proficiency in the Iowa test program. Currently, in 2017, we're at 71%. So we're going to push for 1% growth per year for five years, which is a bigger, I mean, you could argue 5% doesn't seem like a lot. In our world, a 5% growth is significant. And then increase math proficiency that same way, from 69% proficient to 74% proficient. Mike's got a little data there. This is what has happened over the last five years, so we have been relatively stagnant. So we've done great things for kids. We communicate better with parents and families. We offer a lot more opportunities for kids to, to be involved in things, but we also need to get the data improved. And so why, so you're seeing some very different outcomes here. We're saying, what does the data say? So you might also argue that this isn't growth data or cohort data. We get that, but we don't have a way of quantifying that year over year. So our work and the work of the ed program, subcommittee, and others is to look at that growth data and how are you using growth data to inform your practice to get this data to move? Is that a fair assessment, Cindy?
And I would say it's also about the schools, looking at their students, and how do they get growth for students specific to their school and how they monitor that growth.
So we want to be very specific, and in this, you'll see we've got a pretty significant flat line, and in some areas, quite honestly, dipped. And if you went back another five years, and the tests get re-normed from time to time, so that gets to be... But what, what are we going to do from a priority initiative standpoint, if I'm looking at that data? How do we get more data-driven, and how are we going to make reading and math scores go up? Okay? Any questions about that? Eighth grade, increase reading proficiency on the Iowa testing program, currently at 70%. Again, a five-year goal of 1% a year, to 75%. Increase math proficiency on the Iowa testing program. So you'll see some commonalities, again, incoming in kindergarten, midway through your elementary experience, midway through your secondary experience. You'll see math at eighth grade and reading, the data from before. So we've seen some slight growth in math in eighth grade. Reading is relatively flat based on the, for the last five years. And so again, I'm sorry, I said those backwards. Reading is, see some growth, and math is flat. At least, I think I said it backwards. So what are we going to do? Again, if we're doing, if these are our, why do we have these goals? We have these goals because we want all of our kids to be successful. Why do we have these purple? Again, it's about how are we tracking the success of our students? So 11th grade, increase reading proficiency on the Iowa testing program, 73% proficient in 17, 5%. You'll see the 5%. Again, we really don't have a great measure for that, but 5% seems to make sense. 1% is a significant task, and that's a significant growth. You'll see that over time, we haven't had that. So, and then 81%, I'm sorry, can you go back, Mike? 81% to 86% in math proficiency. Again, you'll see, particularly in reading in 11th grade. Now, one concern we have about 11th grade measure is 11th graders taking an ITP aren't always the most serious of people. Because, because honestly, when I'm in 11th grade, most of what I care about is something that impacts my future. It's the ACT, it's the Accuplacer that NICC uses, it's maybe the ASVAB if I'm going into the military. So those tests resonate with me, like I better get in there and try my hardest. Some of our very best students, quite honestly, from time to time, don't do very well on, on this test because they don't see a connection between this. There isn't a college, university, community college in the world who looks at this data. So our kids are kind of at that point where they're saying, and does this matter? But so, we have to find ways to help it matter to them. But they're really, you know, I've, for all my years in education, when I used to teach high schools, the same thing. Those 11th graders tend to be, not all of them, I'm generalizing, but a lot of them are demotivated because they have tests they care very much about. This just isn't one of them. College and career readiness. So now we're at the end of that pipeline. We've, we've looked at the data in kindergarten, in third grade, in eighth grade, in 11th grade. But then when kids walk across that stage, what are some of those other pieces? So we want to increase the number of students who have college and career experiences. So they've taken an AP class, a PSEO, and concurrent enrollment, a PIC, which is a class that you would take at NICC. And then the new one, which I should highlight it, is the internship piece. So how are we getting kids out there so that 100% of our graduates, we don't collect this data now, so there's no baseline, 100% of our graduates have had some exposure to the world beyond our high school walls. It might be the world of work, might do something with an electrician, a carpenter, a house building project, a tiny house project. It might be the AP class, it might be, we, we, one of the things, we've shared this before, one of the things we worry about when we sit on that stage of graduation, those kids walk across and they're excited, and many of them have plans, but some kids don't have a plan. And a lot of times, maybe it's that middle-of-the-road, you know, GPA student, and they walk across that stage, and, you know, three days later, they're scratching their head, saying, well, what should I do now? So we're not going to find the solution for all of those kids necessarily, but we're going to at least give them experiences to help them make some decisions or to think in their mind what they might want to be. And the way we can do that is to give them some type of a college or career experience. That list is probably not exhaustive. There could be some other pieces on there, too.
So we'll survey them this year, kind of create a baseline or what's our?
Yeah, so we're going to try to figure that out, because some of that we know. So like the AP, PSEO, concurrent enrollment, PIC, those things we can pull in. The other things, we're going to have to kind of try to figure that out, because some of that they've done on their own, not through us, but like the CNA program and that sort of thing. Many kids have done it through us, sometimes they've done it, and some are on their own. So it won't be an exact science, but we know we want 100% of our students doing that in the future. We know it's not 100% now, we inspire 200%. Below that is something else we think is important to our students when they think about their future, but increase the number of students taking post-secondary qualifying exams. Again, we don't know what that is now, we're trying to find that out. We're asking those questions. We know how many take the ACT and who they are. The Accuplacer and Alex are community college tests that are used for placements. The SAT, the ASVAB, which is for the military placement for what job skills they might qualify for in the military. Again, it's about how do we get 100% of our students doing this activity so that they have at least the beginnings of a plan for their future? So again, it's about those kids when they walk across that stage. They should have been exposed to that. The, the, the trick is that as you increase, our ACT scores are fantastic. David, do you remember those off the, off the cuff? So we're two points ahead of the state average, which is a full point ahead of the national average. The risk in something like this is with more kids taking the ACT, that may diminish a little bit, but that's okay, as long as our kids who are doing well are still doing well, right? And we add a few more to that, because the research is that if a student takes an ACT, and maybe they weren't thinking about college, but now as a junior, they take an ACT, and they get above a 21, which is sort of that success indicator, they might, it might change some of those thoughts in their head. But we're all, you know, and again, it's all about planning and creating those experiences. But again, it could be, it could be the Accuplacer, and so it's not just everything's focused on four-year. We're saying it could be a two-year, again, the, those tests. Go ahead, Mike. Graduation rate, 2016, we're just below 90%. We don't ever know, the graduation rate is always delayed because they give us the four and five year at the same time. So we'll get the 17 graduation rate this, well, probably early fall, because it'll incorporate the students who graduated last year, but also students who are in the five year. And so we want to increase our graduation rate to 92%. That, again, is a 3% or two and a half, two and a quarter percent increase. And then the same amount, basically, with our five-year graduation rate. We've talked about this before. Ultimately, four-year or five-year, the state puts all of their money in the four-year plan, I get that, and that's fine. But to me, if a student takes an extra year to graduate, but they graduate, I don't know ultimately that we care. And that, that five-year often encompasses some special education students because they are entitled to stay a little bit longer, and so it encompasses them. So again, there's our graduation, you've seen this data before. And the way, the only way we can impact this data is for all of our groups to, to move in the right direction. So we know, for example, we've talked about that our African-American graduation rate is up to 85%. It was at 75% not long ago, so we've seen trajectory there. So we need all, if we're going to get to 92%, we need all kids. So we need, if we're going to get to 92 percent, we need all kids. We want to get to 92 percent for all kids. And to get there as an average, we're going to have to move all, different, different kids, a different amount. But, so what you'll see here in this outcomes is, your initial impression, I'm interested to hear that. It might be, it seems disjointed from the goals, but if we remember, those goals are about the outcomes. How do we do, what are those goals? How does that set the work in that middle stage? And then what do we see from our, from our students? So this is where you say that's, whoosh, start over? Or you like it? Or you like part of it? Or, you know, what's, what are your thoughts?
I like it.
I like it. I like taking measures here.
It's been very specific and in a way that we haven't done before. And so that obviously creates a little bit of a level of stress because what if we can't get there? But we're going to.
But we're making the attempt.
We're never going to get there if we don't focus on.
We're trying to focus on the whole student and every student, not just the college bound.
We talked about a lot of things. We talked about should we add activities participation? Should we put in behavior data? And we really talked about, but that's the work of the subgroups. Our activities.
Right.
Groups should be, we know that activities participation increases graduation rate, increases GPA, increases. So we get that already, so we don't have to put that number on here. But we need a subgroup looking at that saying, you know, Amy, what are we going to do to get that done? Or special education students or all of those things. But how do we get all of our students, you know, live up to that mission statement for all of our students around this? So then our next, oh, could you go back to the, like, the third slide?
In the second part, yeah.
Yeah. So go back one more. So goal areas, then outcomes, but then to get to those outcomes, we're going to have to have an awful lot of action steps, of which we're choosing to call the optimal learning environment, which is, activity participation is behavior data, is technology resources available, which is the right learning school environment. So it's one cent sales tax and how do we utilize those dollars for, for the right building upgrades? So we agree on the outcomes and a lot of work will go into those action steps to how do we get to those outcomes. So you'll see lots of, you know, we're not, we're not, I guess my point is we're not ignoring the non-academic. We're saying we do all of those things because we know it also has an impact on the academic.
Graduation, yeah.
So you'll see that, our purple is where our, what you'll see is you'll see bullets, these, like, if you've got this here, the dark bullets, but you won't see the little, you'll see the dark statements, the bold statements, but you won't see the bullets because the bullets are the yearly priority initiatives that are developed around this. So what are, so this will be condensed a little bit. Then what are we going to do?
So you'll be reporting out what you're doing to get to these outcomes.
You'll see both. You'll see, you'll see, you'll see next year, you'll see, if this is where you want to go, you'll see this three times a year and you'll see this as it makes sense at least once a year because things report at different times. So maybe it's a meeting like this where, where are we here and then where are we in the big picture?
I noticed how the goals there, the increase in proficiency, that roughly increased them all by about 5 percent.
About a percent a year.
And are those realistic in your estimation?
Well, you saw our previous five years, so it's a stretch. But if we don't, they're not impossible.
You've got to put the bar high.
Yeah, they're not 10 percent, they're not 20 percent, they're 5 percent, which is a stretch, but they're, you know, if we, I'd rather set the goal at 5 percent and get to 3 and 1/2 percent.
There you go.
Than to not have set a bar and stayed flat.
I hear what you're saying about the action steps reflecting the broader base of issues. And I understand that. It feels to me, however, as if we could, if these are the ultimate outcomes, that we could produce graduates who are academically meeting these goals where we would want them to be and where they have been measured on purely academic kinds of tests.
And some career.
Right.
Ready.
Then at 11th and 12th grade, I see that we start looking at the broader picture of it and that there would be some reporting out on college and career readiness, graduation rate. It feels to me, however, that in preschool through 10th grade, we could, by these outcomes, I'm comparing with the mission statement, we could produce graduates who have poor behavior, low character, poor citizenship, and existing in an unsafe and non-productive climate of learning. We know all of that is going to come in the action steps.
Yeah, I would disagree with.
But by not.
Yeah, I would disagree with part of that and not, so you're right, some of those things we'll lose contact with. And we can add a goal, add some goals to that. We tried to figure out what's realistic. I don't necessarily with the unsafe, unproductive because then we can't get to our goals. You know, if we, if we don't have that, we can't get to those outcomes if we allow that type of environment.
I understand.
The other piece, the character piece, I get. I'm not sure how to measure that.
It seems we ought to be holding as ultimate outcomes more than just student achievement and test data. That's how this feels to me. Worthy things. These are high aspirations for improvement, to see a percentage gain at all levels every year.
That's aggressive.
That's aggressive. And good.
Yeah.
Good, I appreciate that. It just feels to me, if left just to these outcomes, which are the ultimate things that we value, that we're still missing the landscape that we address in our mission statement. That citizens of character, inclusive learning community, some of those things ultimately may help us get to higher student achievement, but maybe not.
Yeah, but I go, I go back to the goal areas that we've got listed there because, again, these are the outcomes. And, but ultimately, those are the goals. That's what we want this to produce at the end of the day. And I, and I, so I think, I'm not sure we've missed that because remember, we combined student development and student achievement. We didn't throw student development to the curb.
No.
Student development was a part of what we talked about and I think we've captured it in the, in the, in the goal areas. So I don't feel like we've left that, you know, to.
Nancy, is there a measure you're thinking of?
I don't have that thought through.
And you don't have to tonight. I mean, to add a measure or two is certainly possible.
Sure. It just feels to me that our ultimate outcomes ought to include something about character, something about the community of learners.
So I'll be really, here's, here's what I'm thinking in some of this, and I think they're thinking it too unless they're just agreeing with me. But so when I talk about an inclusive learning community, okay? I want all of our students to have high academic achievement. And I know, I know you do too. That's not the, but we can't get a graduation rate, we can't get AP and those types of participations if we're not working through inclusive processes to say, why don't we have enough minority students in AP? What are we going to do? How do we make them feel invited into that part? I guess my point, our point initially was, we can't get here if we don't do those things. I think we, as a district, have done better about cultural competency training, that type of thing in the last year or two. And so I think there's a, I think that feels right, feels good, but I also want to make sure that it translates into experiences that really set students on a path for success. And I know you do.
And I, and I know that you do. It just feels that we don't represent that in the outcomes because we don't speak of it. We speak of test scores and, and counts.
So, yeah, so what I really should have said is, for all students, our graduation rate, our goal is to be 92 percent. For all students, you know, because that really is the lens that we're looking at all of these things, is how do we get all of our students to these levels? And we can't possibly do that without paying attention to the things that you're mentioning. But you're right, they're not one of our goals.
But they're in the work.
But they are.
They're in the middle.
So you have to go back to the goal areas, that that's what we want, right? This is, all these are, are just going to tell us, are we on the right track? That's what the outcomes are telling us. That, are we on the right track? And what the challenge for staff is to say, okay, if this is what we're going to measure, you know, what do we have to be doing in order to achieve those goal areas? I don't, I don't feel like we've left anything out. I mean, I, I agree, there's no way, what you described in that was an extreme, but you can't, you can't graduate somebody and have a, have an overall graduation rate at 95 percent and have almost any kids that are not, you know, they don't have, they lack character, they're not, you know, they're not good citizens and all those types of things that we, that we battle in small little segments. But in order to get that level, we've got to, we've got to work from the bottom up and we've got to address the needs that those kids have. And I think these action plans that you'll come up with will have to address those because if they don't, it's a numbers game and you will never get there.
One of the ways I was.
I think, but I had the thinking that you had, Nancy, because at one point, we were talking about that optimal learning environment and we had it underneath there with outcomes and we had measures. We had Gallup poll and we had attendance and we had discipline referrals and we had those other pieces until we realized that it really, that, that data that we're measuring will come through in the action plans, in the action plan reports. I don't, it feels like it's not there, but it's obviously, if you look at those outcomes, that's optimal learning environment. And every one of those, at least three of the four of those, it's very clearly in there.
Oh, there's no question about that.
And so we, we looked at the new teacher center, the optimal learning environment and their definition that breaks social-emotional learning into three different areas, and that's what comes through in all of our action planning. So I think even more often, we'll be paying attention to those pieces and those measures as they're reported to you through the priority initiatives. So I don't think it's lost. I think it's just in a little bit different place.
Sure.
The way you're reorganizing and having all of these goals tied to all of, all the actions, all the outcomes tied to the goals, I think it makes sense now.
I think, so without, last Friday was a horrible day. We lost a lot of opportunity to educate kids that day. Okay? So we talked about, do we have in the goal areas a safety goal? But that's in here because if we don't have every year, priority initiatives around safety, we can't reach these goals because we can't have a learning environment where our graduation rate increases, where our reading, because we're, we're in a spin where we're dealing with other things. So those will exist in, go to, into the action steps. You know, the, how are we going to define a safe environment? Well, we're going to define it, it, we can't have learning in a condition like we had last Friday. We can't. And so in these action steps, you'll see very specific pieces of physical security, training security, relationship security, because it's going to take all of those things before we can, to maximize the safety for our students. But if we don't do that, we can't reach these goals.
The difference probably lies in how we define the definition and expected use of outcomes. If someone said to me, Dubuque County School District, what do you stand for? What are you after? I'd aim them at the mission, the goal areas, and the outcomes. In the mission, in the goal areas, absolutely, they would see all of that. I get, my question, I'm just really thinking out loud about this, having not seen these, is that it would seem, it ought to have some presence in the expected outcomes. I do understand your rationale. I, I get that. It just feels not quite complete to me. It feels very test score-y.
But it goes back to how would you measure it? I mean, it's really.
Oh, you can.
Well, it's, I.
It's data-driven, for sure.
I agree with what Stan's saying. You cannot have those other things going without it being, I mean, I hear, I know what you're saying because it is important to us, but I think it's an all-encompassing thing that we, we have our mission statement, that that's what we expect as well. We have a high level. We expect that on an every single day basis for absolutely every student that walks through our door.
That's right.
So to keep putting that into the strategic plan, it's like, we, we expect that to happen. That is the highest level that is going to happen every single day. That's like, that's just going to be there. And, and if you don't have that, then you are not going to be able to get those.
Are you, are you implying, Nancy, that you think this is like too much data-driven?
I think if it.
Too quantitative?
If it exists only in what we have on this paper, it is strictly student achievement data.
I look at, we're not going to get from here to here without improving the character of a student, improving their work ethic, making them a better person and a better contributor to the society. Those are the things we're going to do in the middle to get from here to here. So I feel like we, we are going to address them.
That's kind of our philosophy, but if we want to add, I mean, we have some time to think about this, but we certainly could add a measure or two around that. I'm not sure exactly what they would be.
I just raise it as a question. It strikes me as.
Good question.
We've had, we've had this conversation, as you might imagine, with this group of folks for hours and hours and hours. And have been, have asked, we wanted to come out tonight, I wanted to come out tonight with their support and be very specific about saying, this is what we're going to do. This is how outcomes are going to look different for all kids in Dubuque. And those action steps will be imperative. They'll be diverse and wide-ranging from, from curriculum work to professional development for staff, to equity issues, to safety issues. All those things will be in there so that we can reach this. Now that being said, if we felt when we meet again that we needed or tonight to come back with a couple of measures that were not this, that were added to this, we tried hard to keep this list reasonable. You'll also notice that Kevin isn't represented in this list because we don't talk about our financial health because we have goals, right? We, our support services, our board talks about, we know our unspent balance, we know our cash balance, we know our solvency ratio, all those things. They don't need to be represented in the strategic plan, but if we screw those up and class size has become 45 and we have to cut the, you know, these positions, we know we're going to have, we will have no chance of reaching these goals. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to share our philosophy, how we got here. I'm not opposed to, you know, I think there are 12 here, so if that was 14, it was 14. I mean, we can have that conversation, but that's, just to let you see how we got here.
Sure.
Stan, you opened the door kind of a little bit.
Uh-oh.
I wanted to go back to our mission statements there. For the better part, in our old pillars, I'll say, I guess there's, there were five and now there's going to be four. Correct?
Correct.
Almost everything except effective resource management is carried through in our mission statement, except the safety issue. And you alluded to that it'll be incorporated into our other action steps.
Because we're also calling that optimal learning environment. How do we create the optimal learning environment?
Right, right. So I just, I kind of think in light of just different things, circumstances in the past several weeks or whatever, do you think it's valuable to include that as one of our pillars or not? What does the rest of the board feel here?
Yeah, I would argue no because where would you stop?
Right.
It's not just safety. In three weeks, there's going to be something else that pops up that probably would, you know, that probably say we should.
I'm not necessarily talking.
That's what optimal learning environment.
Well, I'm just saying, in our mission statement, we have all these things included except we have nothing, there's nothing here. I don't see safety mentioned in here at all.
So I would equate Jim, and again, we're just brainstorming, so I'm not, I mean, you also don't see equity in here because the assumption is that equity cuts across to all these. So safety is a student achievement, student development issue. It's a community engagement issue. How are we working with our families? It is an effective resource management. How are we using money for security cameras and locked doors and, you know, whatever else is deemed to be necessary? It is an employee excellence. What, what training takes place in all, it almost has to cut across, you know, we don't, safety, equity, those things can't be here. It has to be in all of these areas. So when we build plans, there, you'll see some safety in here, some safety in here, some safety in here, you know, effective resource management. How are we going to spend dollars to, we've had conversations, lots of conversations, as you might imagine, in last, since last Friday about how financially building in about how financially building and grounds, what might we do from a safety perspective? And that we can talk about in our next support services meeting. But again, safety has to be across all of these. It can't be its own column, just like equity can be its own column.
Okay, I can see that, yeah.
Yep.
You get into semantics with some of this stuff. I'm a hardcore goal setter. If you talk to 10 hardcore goal setters, they each will tell you how the way your plan is set up is wrong because they're all very bought in to their approach for how they want to have their goals look. I mean, if I had my way, I would probably like to see community engagement as one of the draft outcomes. But, okay, I get it. It's going to be handled in another area of the plan and we're not going to quit engaging with the community. So as long as the people who are executing this plan believe in the outcomes and as long as the other stuff, as long as, because it doesn't show up in the outcomes, it doesn't mean we start wasting money. Doesn't mean that we start disregarding safety. Doesn't mean that we quit communicating with the community. As long as that stuff is still going on personally, I'm okay. And I couldn't be any more excited about the fact that we are taking the most aggressive stand on student outcomes, academic outcomes that we've ever taken, hands down. I mean, the continued evolution of this is, because I've been here since the initial strategic plan blasted off in '02 or '03 and it blasted off right up to three-ring binder heaven as soon as we blasted it off and we dusted that thing off, I think, a few, about a few months later. And, oh, I guess we have this plan here now. This, to me, feels like we're truly holding ourselves accountable and I get excited about that. I'm comfortable personally that my own sacred cows are going to be addressed in the plan or through consistent daily activities as well.
And the board has opportunity and oversight of our priority initiatives. So we're not asking you to just say, okay, be there in five years, come and tell us if you've been there. But you know our process for creating our priority initiatives. We get some input, we share, we do a draft. But you'll have, you know, if you don't think that in the next rendition of prior initiatives, safety's been addressed, then the quickest way to action is to get it in a priority initiative because that happens immediately. Well, unless it's a swimming pool. But in most areas, it gets, it gets it to, so equity, safety, a lot of those pieces, and the board has authority over those. I mean, we present them and the board by and large tweaks them and changes them, but we would present them after conversation with you. So there is that piece too. So you will have, you know, the activities committee can say, hey, we need, we need some prior initiatives that come through activities. The support services say, hey, you know, we need to think about a new elementary school on the southwest arterial or something and we need to have some bullets around that the way we have with the pool. The ed programs will have a lot of input regards to the student achievement, student development. So what are the bullets around there? Again, can we live with more measures? Yes. So if that's really where we end up, I'm not arguing against that. I'm just trying to explain that certainly there is a lot of opportunity in that area on a yearly basis to set direction of the district. Again, we want those outcomes to be data-driven and we could certainly add, again, like I said, some other data pieces. That's not, I mean, it's 12. We could just easily have 14, that's not.
12 is, 10 would be better than 12 and 8 would be better than 10. I mean, if you really want to get something done, we, you know...
We just wanted to go early, mid, 8th grade, 11th grade. What are our graduates have?
I think one point of our conversation has also been, tonight, we're looking at this in isolation. So you're seeing outcomes removed from the rest of it for the sake of our conversation because that's the point we're at. But, you know, we've been committed and I believe you're committed and we're committed to the page and a plan concept that we found great success in that I think some of that, I hope, as we think about how to implement, is that when you see the plan in totality, and I know with this plan, we're very intentional about talking about it in totality, that I also hope some of those things that you're referring to, Nancy, come through in that because it's presented in a more holistic way. That tonight, we're really extracting the outcomes and saying, here are the measurements. But when you see it together, that I think you honor the process and the work that happens in that piece of it in a more public way that helps the reader tie those components together to say, here's what the school district values. These are the values that are in there. All of those pieces, I think, come through in those other ways that when it, certainly that will be our goal when it comes into totality, that the context will be there to support those very things because they've been very much a part of our conversation and the intent moving forward. So it just, I think that's a part of the kind of implementation piece of bringing that home so that we make sure that those values get through in that piece of it.
And we've become more sophisticated in a good way. I mean, there are many people who are trying to sort of emulate some of the things that we're doing as a district. But if you look at, again, I'm not, we were where we were five years ago. We were trying to do a plan and a page. It was actionable that we talked about on a regular basis. But look at some of these success measures or outcomes. Student and staff access to technology. I could have bought one new computer and say, yep, we increased student and staff access. So we're trying to get away from that and lock ourselves into, no kidding, this is what we're doing. Now, we have to do, we can't do that without doing all these other things in there. But we really got nervous, I'm afraid, when we did this five years, or something, I don't know, as I look at that, I think.
I'm surprised we improved on that.
Yeah, well, but we were all, but we were all... But we were all in a different place and we've grown significantly in the last five years in a very positive way. And so now it's just time to take another step that direction and to really hold ourselves accountable to get to those goals.
And I think you do that and I think that is, it is an evolution. We, I think we've laid the foundation over the last five years for all the things that were incorporated into our strategic plan. And to some, yeah. Those outcomes may seem like big hairy audacious goals, but now's the time to go on that. I mean, I remember we talked about that when we drafted the initial plan, but the reality is we finally looked in the mirror and went, we're not there yet. You know, there's so much that we believed we could do, but we knew there was a lot of foundation building that needed to happen, whether it was, you know, whether it was the community, whether it was our teachers and developing them as well as getting, you know, kids oriented around where they could go or what they could be. And I just think that's, it's the right time to do that. We may fall a percent short on some of these and 2% short, but that's going to be, that's still going to be success. What's not success is what you see happening now, which is flatline. And we've got to move the dial.
Or we might exceed by a percent or two.
Yes. Feel free to do that. Permission granted.
But as we got talking about this, we thought, you know, having more technology is not the goal.
Right.
The goal is the outcome that comes by having access to the technology. So that was our mindset.
I like it.
Stan says we will exceed by one or two percent.
I said might.
2023.
Rewind that.
Early 2023. I like it.
I like it too. I think it's, it is challenging for, I mean, it's scary for the teachers to have that big of a jump to have to go through in a way to say, but it gives them something to aim for too.
And we've also talked a lot about how do we, how do we help everybody understand that these are joint goals?
Right.
You know, the kindergarten teacher should care about the graduation rate.
That's right.
Kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher should show up, you know, they should feel so tied into that that they're coming to graduation because they know they're just as important to that young person graduating as the teacher that they had the very last semester of their senior year. And so all of these goals, we'll try to work on as a, that's a team progression in graduation and 11th grade. I mean, those are, it's all the work that's gone before and it didn't just happen in 11th grade or 12th grade. It started in, now, we're saying in preschool and at home. And now, let's get them there.
So if I take my, if I do my best Barry Posner and we challenge the process, which we've done here, we're going at this thing a little differently. Inspire a shared vision, that's what we're doing now. Model the way, we're going to definitely walk the talk ourselves. Enable others to act, we're going to figure out how to do that. Number five, that we still sometimes, I think, we're inconsistent with or that all organizations could be better at is encourage the heart. So how do we, the real trick is going to be to get 1,800 staff members excited and bought in and passionate and feel good about this Herculean effort to move our scores to the right. So that's, I hope that we think about staff celebrations, public praising of people, slaps on the back, case studies of our best teachers who didn't just get one year grade level jump, they got two and a half. Or, and how did they do that? And how do they engage, that kind of stuff.
And we will still focus on at ed programs and other places, growth and those types of things because those are key. We have to look at what our growth is. We have to look at with MAP data, whatever test the state ends up, what, how do we show growth, cohort growth, all types of different growth? Because that's what's going to, that growth is what gets us to proficiency. But you're right, it's the, it's the bus driver that the kid's excited to see that maybe gets him to go to school on a day when otherwise he might have particularly been sick and what learning opportunities are there then because, hey, I wanted to see, you know, Mr. Jones, the bus driver. All those things are important.
It was an eye-opener when you had the beginning, at the beginning of the school year and you read those little notes that those graduating kids wrote, how many of them referred to their early years that got them to where they're at. So that's kudos to those lower grades.
And that motivation and that hope, which is what we've talked about with trying to measure hope through some of the surveying that's done, that's instilled at the younger age or that expectation and that work ethic is what carries them through too. So it really is everyone's work to get them.
Right.
Any other questions on the strategic plan? Any other items that we want to...
Well, I'll just share very briefly that we have, as you might imagine, had some very specific conversations around school safety and how do we make this Dubuque County School District the safest district that it can be in a way that's impactful? What work needs to be done? Again, as I talked about, about the social media and some of those responsibilities. What are the physical structures that can be changed or tweaked and looked at? We've started that process. What are the policy changes? I think you'll see coming during our next policy meeting, a requirement that buildings do the active, what do we call it? The active shooter training or whatever, the safety training twice a year, once the first 30 days of the year and once the first 30 days of the second semester after the holidays. So I just want, because that wasn't on this agenda and I know that's the conversation or the concern of the community, clearly we're aware of that. We have plans. We're starting to ask building and grounds and things. We met this afternoon with Dubuque Police Department, who have been a great ally in this process. So we will continue to evolve. We'll talk about that at support services because some of them are physical structural pieces. Some of them are training. But tonight, that wasn't the meeting. This meeting's existed for, you know, for a long time as being this meeting. But know that at our upcoming meetings, we have some thoughts and recommendations and already putting some things in place immediately. And then some, we've broken it down into immediate, mid-range and long range. And some of those things, we'll be happy to share. And if you, we might keep a little closer to the vest because we don't necessarily need everybody to understand what security measures are in place.
The people that produced the videos, they were very good.
Well, thank you in the time on Friday. I mean, Thursday night and Friday. Thank you and everybody here at the district. I had nothing but positive comments from the community about it was the right decision.
Communication was outstanding too about the situation and the response.
And the follow-up and the police department stepping in and explaining it too. That was huge to be able to explain all of that. The communication was great, but everybody said it was the best decision you could make, you know.
I hope to never make that decision again.
I hope we never have to do that again either.
Just to echo Stan's comments, our relationship with the Dubuque Police Department is outstanding and that is not the case everywhere. When you look at school district and police department relationships and we're very fortunate for that partnership that is very close and we're in constant communication. And so certainly a hats off from us to them in terms of the involvement that they have, their commitment to the safety of our students, everyone from, you know, their top officials to our school resource officers and everywhere in between. That's a tremendous partnership that we would be, you know, we wouldn't want to think about life without that relationship. So we're thankful to them for all they do to support us.
They're just as involved in our schools as our teachers are, which is really good to see.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to start slapping ourselves on the back. But, you know, 100% of the time so far, knock on wood, when these crazy issues have arisen, we've been able to address them without anybody getting hurt. That goes away in a hurry when somebody gets more creative and someone's one step ahead of what we've been able to strategize for. But no, we don't want to, I don't want to speak for everybody, but we don't want to see that good track record go down the tubes, either from a practical standpoint or from a community confidence standpoint. And I know that Thursday night, it was 12:10 a.m. Friday morning, I think, when I last texted you. And I think by about 5:05 a.m., the text was lighting up again. I did have a fraternity leadership weekend in Chicago this weekend. It may be the first time in history that somebody went from a school board environment to a fraternity environment to get more sleep. That was, those were rugged eight, 10 hours. And boy, I, again, don't want to start slapping anybody on the back because we, there's always so much more work to do.
But it goes to your credibility, Stan, because the leadership that you've given, and I said to him, the last thing I said to him, whatever decision you have to make for Friday, you have my support and I'm sure the rest of the board's support as well. So...
And I appreciate that. And I guess I just, my message to the community is we know that, you know, we, unfortunately, when you've got that many moving parts as a school district does with school buses and buildings and kids and... The 100% solution's really tough. We've got a decent, pretty good solution, but we have learned a few lessons from around the country. Unfortunately, everybody has. We know that the anxiety level is through the roof around the country. That's not specific to Dubuque. We know that there have been eight similar situations in the last two weeks in Iowa. There have been three or four school districts who have also closed for the day. So this is, this is, obviously, it's, all of these other things pale in comparison if we can't, you know, if we have a tragedy. So we're working diligently to get that done. And again, it's going to cost a few dollars in some areas from some upgrades. It's going to be some training changes. We'll learn from, you know, from others unfortunate experiences.
I'll tell you, we, Friday, Thursday night, on one social media site, from the time, this wasn't announced until after 10:00 or whatever the heck it was. From then till about midnight, there were upwards of 1,000 shares of our announcement about this, which to me was heartwarming. This is all going on after 10:00 p.m. You got a bunch of people in the community sharing, sharing, sharing.